We have a forum. Let's begin the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of May 15th, 6:01 PM. Let's begin with any announcements. I don't personally have any, I don't think. Sue?
I have one maybe two. I received an email from Local Motion. They are a bicycle advocacy group based out of Burlington and they've been doing some work in Brattleboro, particularly with the Brattleboro Coalition for Active Transportation, BCAT. And they were reaching out to see if the planning commission was interested in beefing up the bicycle parking regulations that we have. We do have a requirement that commercial businesses provide bicycle parking, but what Jonathan was saying is that the quality and kind of the sighting of those and, you know, whether or not they're covered and stuff can have a big impact. So I had said that I would pass it along with the planning commission, you know, if it's something that you want to take up, you know, as we look at next work that you want to do, I said it would really kind of slow down the process that we're snowballing in right now. So that would not be my preference, but I'll take my cue from you. But anyway, just wanted to put out that offer that they are willing to help look at some other regulations and best practices for bicycle parking if we wanted to strengthen ours. I guess the other announcement, but I don't know how you want to deal with this, Tom, is figuring out a site visit to Winston Pride. Several people have mentioned that May 17th, that's this coming Wednesday, would work. The key thing is I'm going to need to warn this, so if it's going to be May 17th, then I kind of need that decision tonight.
Two of us have a DRB meeting.
We can still make it by seven. We're not, I don't think we'll meet until seven, right?
Yeah.
Oh, so.
They said that they were available on May 17th from 3:30.
Did I miss that email? Did you send emails out there?
Yes.
As soon as it is, today.
Yeah, just today.
Yeah.
So it was like three to something.
They said from 3:30 on, they could do a site offer.
Right.
Great. Oh, I see email.
Does that work?
I can do that too.
They told you earlier. So I can do, you know, I can hitch a ride anytime or else my car, my car back home at 4:30.
Okay. I can definitely get you there.
Okay, yeah, I can walk down here and hitch a ride.
Yeah. What is a good time for?
Wednesday I get out at three, so work. So I can just drive. I don't know where did you want to meet, I guess up there.
I'll confirm it with them.
Yeah, so we have a...
But I mean, if we do 3:30, start working?
3:30 probably be good.
For you, Lena, or is that?
3:30 will be okay.
Okay. I should probably check my calendar. One of us will be open.
Can we say exactly where we'll meet? It's a big property.
Yes, I will give you exactly where.
Okay, by email later?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
I mean, worst case scenario, we have to leave the BIP, I don't think it's going to be till seven at night. I mean, how much do they plan on, I guess?
It's not going to be...
Okay.
They'll talk a little bit about their plans and then show you parts of it. Maybe an hour and a half, Tom?
Oh, yeah.
No, I... So I may not be available, so maybe Steve, just to you. Okay? That's it.
Okay. If there's no announcements from commissioners, let's consider the May first minutes.
I moved the waiver of the minutes from May first.
The question, having read the minutes but not be here, should I properly abstain? Is that...
Typically, people do, but actually I was in some meeting recently where someone was very...
Because if we don't get a quorum, I thought abstain doesn't matter.
Oh, right.
I mean, I don't care.
Well, you can...
Like I read them, but...
Yeah.
It's funny, I've seen it both ways.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, if you watch the recording, then you are pretty objectively able to review if that's accurate or not.
Well, that's it, well, I is it then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um...
So will you be voting then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Someone second?
I'll second that.
The only thing I did was that, it doesn't really change anything of substance, but Spoon's comments were under the looking ahead agenda item instead of public comment. By the time we get to public comment, he excused himself for that.
Yeah, that, that...
A little data to this?
You're saying he's...
I think in the minutes, you have, you have...
I marked in here that about, or about actual threats and that kind of what you're talking about, that got more to talk, eat that, more to talk about.
Well, I'm just saying that the placement of Spoon's comments...
Oh, so you want me to move it under looking ahead? That's fine.
Oh, okay.
But he commented under looking ahead.
Oh, I see.
I thought we moved ahead and then just kind of...
Um, yeah, it was confusing.
But that's fine. I'll put it under looking ahead and then I'll just put no further public comment.
Yeah, okay.
It's fine.
I mean, at least that's the way I remember it.
Yeah.
Sometimes words come out of my mouth and someone's like, "Did you mean to say that?" Well, I thought something different, so... But that's my recollection. Doesn't change the substance though. Is there anything else with minutes? All those in favor with that change of moving that thing forward? Okay. That's all four of us I saw. Great, passes. Four minutes are approved. Now, to consider the changes to the land use regs. We have kind of a final draft, but before the public hearing, a final draft, before the public hearing, it's not a final draft to get the select board done. And we, Brandy Saxton, our consultant of Placense, offered some, she reviewed it and offered about five concerns that she had. So those are in a document. Steph and I met to discuss those and try to, you know, come to some, come to some agreement about how to deal with Brandy's concerns, so that way hopefully it doesn't take too long to do so here at this meeting. How should we proceed? I guess with Brandy's comments, yeah, you have the document up, so, or Steve?
Mine is... Oh, you mean I'm doing? Yeah, okay, you're right. Thank you.
Would you like to go through it, Sue?
Sure. So the first one is just a tweak that she made to the language and we're totally fine with it. It meets the intent. Basically, it has to do with the exemption of the small structure, about 100 square feet or less. So she didn't change any of our intent with it. Makes it more consistent with the section. With the home business section, Brandy was concerned that we were eliminating most of the controls over the business and that if we weren't going to be allowing them to create new parking, that we could create complaints and enforcement headaches, especially in areas where there were not, there was a non-street parking. And so we talked about that a little bit and, you know, our intent was to move some of, remove some of those controls on home business so that we had the home occupation, which was the most permissive because that's statutory, then home business was kind of the next level that we could just issue an administrative permit for, and then you could have the accessory commercial unit, which was more intense and, you know, would have DRC review it of some level. And so we felt like the not allowing the creation of new parking is actually one of those controls that gets to the intensity of the use, whether it's a office use or, you know, some sort of contractor's yard or something like that. And then on top of that, we also felt like somebody could expand their driveway, particularly in these rural areas with a turnaround or something like that. So, you know, they could come in for a permit to do that and, or they could do it on their own without a permission. Driveway extension wouldn't, you know, wouldn't require that from us. So we didn't see this as problematic and we're okay with the language as we agreed on it at the last meeting. The multi-unit open house space requirements, you know, she pointed out and we were in agreement that, you know, 400 square feet of open space is really not meaningful, especially if you have a large development. And so her recommendation was, you know, you might want to, you know, make it larger or just eliminate the section altogether if you weren't, didn't care about the open space. And so, you know, when we met with Tom, we kind of all agreed that, you know, we did want some sort of open space and we kind of wanted to look at a different way of calculating it. So Steph did some research into different ways that open spaces calculate in multi-unit developments. Sometimes it's a flat number per unit, sometimes it's a sliding scale, sometimes it's a percentage of a lot. What we liked was the idea of having a set number that kicks in at 10 units, because anything under 10, you know, that kind of fits in our missing middle housing overlay for lots of areas of town. And if it's not in that area, there's also the setbacks and lot coverage that is providing some open space on the lot. So the recommendation, our recommendation is 800 square feet per 10 lot, 10 units, kicking in at 10 units, and then 50 square feet per unit on top of that. We also kind of clarified a couple of the ways that the open space, you know, with allowing rooftop decks, you know, whether it was a swimming pool or a internal clubhouse or something like that, that could count towards the open space that you needed to provide. And then we kind of cleaned up, we had, before we had had semi-private space and kind of looking at definitions of semi-private, semi-private spaces and private open space. Semi-private spaces are kind of the internal spaces of a building and so we think what we were really talking about in that semi-private space was private open space, so balconies and decks that might be on a unit. So this clarifies it as private open space and basically saying you can get up to 50% of your open space in a private way, because that's one way that maybe we can incentivize some balconies and decks and papios. So that's the proposal before you, if you want to stop and ask questions about that.
Yeah, for me personally, when I met with Steph or when I first saw Brandy's comments, I thought, you know, it's kind of funny that, you know, we make one change and it seems okay, reasonable, and then, but then someone, you know, comes to us with concerns, but then at least me personally, I was like, oh, that's a good point. Maybe we shouldn't have, you know, knocked it so far down as we did. So, you know, kind of interesting to observe one's mind if kind of moved around despite different influences, but, you know, that's, that's the, that's the good thing about getting input from different sources and hopefully settling on a good, a good final version.
I think that perhaps it might change my mind.
Mm-hmm.
If there's no other questions, I'll move on to the next one or... Digesting. The last one was the single room occupancy, where we had, we were encouraging at least a washer and a dryer per floor, and we used the word encourage. You are required to provide laundry facilities in the building, but with the encouragement that for large SROs that one per floor. And she pointed out that encouraging is not regulatory language.
Right.
It's just advisory. And we knew that at the time, I think we had talked about it. And so Tom did a little research, a little, little...
Control F-ing.
Control F, yeah, and found that it's used frequently for our regulations, so we were fine, just leaving it. We couldn't pull the sentence out, but she is correct. It's not regulatory, but maybe it helps.
But the DRB may still, you know, be able to use it for some influence? With the single room occupancy, when we were relooking at that, maybe a small detail shoot, I lost it, that I caught was, remember when we were altering the wording with like range and stove and cooktop?
Yes.
So the wording we settled on, I think I'm about to get to it right now, was... Single room occupancy. Okay. A full kitchen includes a se... Oh, no, I'm looking at the wrong document. Three opening, yeah?
This one.
Few pages down. Right, there, yeah. So what we settled on in the kitchen line was a full kitchen includes a sink, refrigerator, and a cooktop or oven. I think, at least me personally, when we were, we got rid of stove and range top and just used the more clear term to at least all of us, cooktop. But did we mean to say cooktop or oven, or did we mean to say both a cooktop and an
Does range mean both?
I think range is just the top.
Does the top, the oven, it's a range?
A range is typically the cooktop and the oven in one unit.
That's what I was...
Oh, that's what things call the range? Oh.
No, I didn't know that for sure.
So a cooktop can be standalone and an oven can be standalone and a range is when you put the two things together.
At least in my mind...
But here it was range top.
It was range top.
Oh, so that was...
So the previous...
So then the previous way, stove.
I mean, the thing that's interesting about this is that it's certainly possible to do simple cooking without either. So adding a cooking device changes the sort of cooking that happens. If we allow range hoods, or sorry, ranges, but don't require range hoods, it starts to get into all these other, you know, complications in terms of building science.
Those air cookers to potter and...
Right, yeah, and microwaves, there's three-in-one combos, there's all sorts of...
Heaters I'm hearing about?
Mm-hmm, yeah, induction cooktops, yeah. So, but I, in many places, a full kitchen does include an oven. That's often the distinguishing characteristic is an oven.
As well as burners for pots and stoves, for pots and pans, right?
But in many places, they've chosen to use oven as the distinguishing characteristic that makes a kitchen, a full kitchen, a full kitchen. It's almost like a bathroom can be like a three-quarter bath.
Right.
If you don't have a bathtub, but you've got the sink and the toilet and the shower. I think of it a little bit like that. So the advantage of requiring that there be an oven to have it considered a full kitchen is then when a full kitchen is required, all of those things need to be provided, which increases the sorts of cooking someone could do. One of the kind of loophole things that I'm aware of has happened is in places where an oven is what defines a kitchen, is people will put in everything but an oven and say it's not really a kitchen, which could be beneficial in terms of increasing housing, but it would mean that, you know, in a situation like this, if we don't require an oven, then we could have, you know, eight units in a spot where they don't have access to an oven at all. A toaster oven can do pretty well, so maybe that's okay.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Safety, safety stats, change it all with this stuff? Look at a bit of inflation that has mostly what, if cooks, oh, limited things, or they are likely to use toasters in dangerous ways or something, I just don't know. We may not be, you know, responsible for any such decisions anyways, but...
So I guess my question is if you say a hotel's converted into a condition as a room occupancy, most hotels are equipped with what?
A full kitchen?
A little refrigerator, microwave, or a warmer?
Well, those are all in the rooms, right?
Right.
We're saying with this line here that if the rooms don't have a full kitchen, then the building itself needs at least one full kitchen for...
Right.
The, you know...
So now, okay.
Six units, the 50 units that may be there. I think it should say cooktop and oven. I mean, if there needs just be one full kitchen for all the residents...
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, my, every house, I know this isn't a house, but every house I've been in, you know, a range, like you're saying, has a cooktop and an oven, so if we're just...
Or an air fryer or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, an oven only costs a few hundred bucks and this is going to be a thing where eight or dozens of people live in different units. It's not hard to have the kitchen be an actual full kitchen.
Was a page for you.
So changing the word or to and there is the suggestion?
Well, a sink, refrigerator, cooktop, and oven. We're all in agreement about that?
Yeah.
All right. So there was a few, so we got through Brandy's comments and Steph and I reviewed them and, you know, we came up with those solutions that Sue went through and we just addressed that little change in SRO. But there's two or three others that, if we go back to that document that Sue's opening right now, there's a couple others right there at the end that Steve discovered and is pointing out.
So there were a few additional items that I was able to pick out as potential omissions or things that we should make small changes to before finalizing. So I noticed that we left in floor area ratio in the urban center and service center, not for residential structures, but for other use types, and that seems like a regulatory tool we were moving away from. So it seems like that would be worth striking in its entirety. And then in addition to that, the rear setback for RN 36, RN 54, city use and neighborhood center.
Just our two army districts.
Wow, I got those wrong. Sorry.
So it's not 46, it's 26.
We go with 26. I would have liked to see 2600.
So you go with 26.
That was something that I think we should also include the zero for attached in the similar sense that we do for side setbacks in those districts so that there isn't a potential regulatory language conflict between the base districts and the Section 303A attached housing, because that provides for the ability to attach in rear and/or on the sides.
Both those cleared, people? Is there any...
Makes sense.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I didn't talk about the back-to-back question.
Yeah. Okay, yep.
There was one, excuse me, there was one that isn't included in here that I noticed today that the commission might be interested in considering. So in the missing middle overlay of five, or 253...
Can we pause right there since you're going to click it? Should that be highlighted as well since it's a new section? Just so the public, you know, when they see this document in the future to...
Oh, sure. Yeah.
That's my comment. Or observations as I went through this, this version?
Both taking notes of that, sorry, sorry.
So in this particular section, there is slightly further down the page, I believe, there is, actually on the following page, there's a clause precedence here, 253F. I would propose that we would want to think about rewriting that to avoid the potential for this to overrule, so to speak, the flood hazard overlay, the historic resource overlay, and potential zoning base district or accessory use and structure standards that might be more permissive. I don't think that we actually intend for this to be the...
It's actually not true about the base zoning district though? Because these supersede the base zoning district, it's not... I would disagree with, on the base zoning district.
It would potentially create issues with regard to the side or rear property line setback, for instance, with the six feet being listed here, just below. 253G where it says six feet rather than just six feet or zero if attached. There may well be issues with, I can take a look at making sure that the language is
I need to think that one through. I mean, you guys might be on board, but I need to think of it.
I suppose we could see the wording that you're thinking or that you'll come up with for the public hearing, then we can just give special attention to it, you know, and not just gloss it over when the public hearing is closed. And then we, you know, actually, when the public hearing closes, you know, in like, let's say the first half of our next meeting, then say the second half of our meeting might be us like talking about what we heard from the public hearing and/or our last, you know, our last thoughts and last changes before then we send it to the select board, so...
I think it's probably safe to say that having gone through all of this land use regulation updates, we're wanting things to be more permissive to allow the sorts of development we've been talking about for the last several months. So whatever language needs to be said to make it consistent with that, I am in support of it and I'm getting the sense others are too.
My concern with it is that it's kind of around the regulations. So this session, you know, you can do a triplex, right? Side by side, but there's a way to kind of do footprint lots in here. So all of a sudden, if you're doing a triplex and somebody else is doing a triplex, like you could get up to so many by using this missing middle and using that zero setback and all of a sudden you put in all these units that would normally go for some other type of review, like... So that's my concern with it. I totally understand on the historic resource and the flood and I agree with that. I'm just not sure the intent for this was, was to be zero unless you were building in one of these manners, so...
Is it, would I be correct in interpreting it that if you wanted to pursue building to the base district standards and would otherwise potentially be able to be approved under this overlay district, that you'd be able to do that?
If you wanted to build in the base zoning district, but you could be approved under this, yes.
You could basically opt to not be considered under this for whatever reason if that was... I just want to make sure.
That's what I understand, right?
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, it's a no, yeah.
So then in that case, I don't think there's any issue with the subsection G, it should just be the F includes things that we don't intend for this to take precedence over. So I think that would be just the other two overlay districts and potentially anything that is from state statute, although I would assume that Brandy already did the due diligence on that, but we can make sure.
Well, it sounds good to me, but we'll see, we'll see the language at next meeting.
Okay, so you don't want me to see that for the hearing? You want to see it separate for the hearing?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, can you just insert it in there with, you know, with big stars and highlights?
Well, I mean, what's going to happen is after tonight, hopefully we'll vote on something to send it to a public hearing. We can make the minor, like you can say, add, you know, you know, have it include a state statement that it doesn't, this doesn't take, that flood hazard overlay and some review take precedence over this. Or would still apply, let's put it that way.
Still apply.
And then you'll see it, so the draft that we take to public hearing will include that language.
Right. Well, I guess we should vote on that right now, right?
Yeah.
So the motion was that 253... So the motion was that 253F will include wording that it doesn't take precedence, the provisions of that section over the flood hazard overlay and the historic resource overlay and any mandated state statutes. Is that part of it too?
Yes.
Did I miss something? Those three things, okay.
A second?
Any more comment, discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The only thing I had extra or additional in the observation, I think, lose attention, is not anything with wording, but some of the formatting, some of the figures moved off their pages. For example, on page 3-66. For the noise, the noise on performance standards. I don't know what actually page number it is, but it's document number 3-66.
Dash 26, 3-20.
3-66.
Okay.
No, it's not working. And it's not working for me to click on that.
Usually what I do is I go all the way back to the beginning and then click the section.
You try turning it off again.
I did 3-60, oh.
You gave it a page number.
Right.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, look at that. So there's the figure for maximum noise levels, but look at the text around there. The actual place where figure 3-39, the maximum noise levels is referenced is three pages down below.
Yep.
So I caught two other things like that. The rural enterprise table is a few pages off from the actual rural enterprise PUD. And then. And then I forget what this next one was for. Figure 3-31, what was that?
Figure 3-31.
Yeah, figure 3-31 was. Was off two pages.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, we'll ask Kurt.
And I didn't, I mean, there could be others too. I didn't observe all of them, so.
The base district use tables for a few districts, but not all of them had gone up a number. I'm not sure if that was reflected in the list of tables and charts. The heading on them was actually correct, but it was different from the 2021 version.
That also might take a little bit more formatting time than before the public hearing if that worked out. It's not, it's just formatting.
Doesn't change the content?
No.
Okay, is there anything else? Any commissioners or anyone has to say about this version of land use regs before we next see it at an actual public hearing?
Now, question, after the final, after the meeting is gonna be a finalization.
So after the meeting, if we approve this draft, we're gonna warrant a public hearing for July, June 5th. And then after that, we'll take public comments. After that, the planning commission can decide at that meeting. They can take longer, but basically you'll take a vote to send it along to a select board where they will hold public hearings. So what you're doing tonight is just setting it up for a planning commission public hearing. It's not any binding action other than to hold a public hearing.
Any final things to address with the regs, this version? Okay. I guess, can I hear a motion to finalize this draft for the public hearing?
Sure.
Alright, Tom hands it, Lynn seconds it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, great. Moving on to a quick review of the bylaw amendment report. This is something that the planning commission need send to, need prepare and send to a state level department and the Wyndham Regional Commission. But since we're so lucky to have staff in this town, they do it for us. And we review it. They do it on behalf of us. So, or at least that's what's been happening. Maybe in a future year, one of you will write it all yourself. But I think they did a great job. I've got a few little points, quick ones, I think. Just in the first paragraph of section A, it says that these changes are made to help with fair property taxation. I'm not necessarily disputing that, but I'm just looking for a quick, you know, education about how it does so.
Yeah, or fair is a tricky one.
I mean, it says things like orderly development. It's just like, yeah, I guess that's what the regs are largely for, you know, aesthetics and spacing of housing, but like, I don't know how they help with fair property taxation. I mean, they might increase property taxation.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could take that out.
Okay.
I had made a false assumption that that might have been quoting from statute or a town plan. So that particular part of the sentence was left in, but.
It probably comes from state statute.
Yeah, so it's something they maybe find out, yeah, they wanna see. And then on page two, in those three examples, well, and actually then in the next two district examples on the next page, the only thing that shows the change, like the before and after, is the maximum building height. It says maximum building height increased from, in the case of mixed use district, four stories to five stories. How come that line shows what we had and what we're changing it to, whereas all the others just show what we're changing it to?
We can put a little table on each current.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's just if the Wyndham Regional Commission and the State Department are just gonna accept this, then fine. It's not like the public's really gonna be looking at this.
Fairly sure they're just gonna accept it. The state has never commented. Wyndham Regional Commission has never commented. However, it is available to the public.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it'll be up.
Yeah, it's a record of, it's a nice executive summary record of.
I think we can put it, easily put in a quick table that just says current, yeah, proposed.
Well, on page three, the missing middle housing overlay district at the bottom of page three, it's just the acronyms messed up in a few cases. The MM, OHD or HOD.
Okay.
MM, HOD, right?
Yeah. Page four, most of the districts are spelled out, but just a few of them are acronymized. And maybe they're not mentioned anywhere else before that in full, so maybe they should just be spelled out.
You're so detailed.
I know. I read the whole thing.
I went through and I thought I got all of them.
Well, if you're the person who writes it as well as the person doing, you know.
That's why the second pairs of eyes and there's a very good proof.
Although maybe Sue wrote it.
No, Steve wrote it.
And then the top of page five for the second bullet point for NCUs, which somehow that snuck in as a change from ACUs to NCUs a couple of months, no, a couple of months ago. And I don't know if we talked about that, but I personally think that was a nice change of terminology. But anyway, second line, it says greater than 500 square feet. Supposed to be less than or equal to, right? Like up to. What it part of this says is, yeah, NCUs are greater than 400, 500 square feet, but we're defining them as not greater than. So those are my five really substantial observations.
Good proof.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go. Get a cookie.
That's how you get the plus after the A.
There you go. That's the taken.
Well, you know, when Steph does such a good job with the content, all you can do is nitpick.
Hey, just if I notice it looking right there and now, why is geometry in the third paragraph, fourth paragraph, why is geometry, quotes, quite the unique geometry of buildings? I just, I don't understand. Makes sense.
I was making use of it sort of poetically, I guess.
Oh, yeah, as long as it doesn't have a legal, you know, meaning whatsoever than it.
Right, I think that was sort of just done habitually, not really on purpose, but I definitely didn't mean to posit any sort of.
I have concern about it. I just, I saw that.
But yeah, if this has any kind of legal import, then I can try to rein in the language before I get crazy.
Yeah, there's.
Okay.
Could we just switch it to form, the unique form of buildings and parcels?
Although it's a tricky word to form. I think, I bound legal, legal plots of this kind of thing, so.
You gave a form?
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else for the report in the commissioner's mind? Anything to say?
It's nice to see the recap.
Yeah, yeah, it's happened.
A lot of, a lot of work got poured into this little, this little recap.
Okay, so how about I move that we approve this report to be sent off to those higher ups and with those six-ish changes that we just.
How about I second?
Well, how about it?
I just found one more at the very end. I missed this at my first read through. Number three at the very end of the document on page eight, there's quotes at the end.
Yep.
That just needs to be removed. I would tidy things up.
Oh, yeah, talking about this little.
Does that make sense, that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I amend my motion.
Terry, on about seven amendments.
Seven amendments.
Sorry, did you vote? I missed.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, from last meeting, I thought maybe we should look back to looking ahead and look forward on that topic a bit more before we stop looking. And maybe, I hope you all saw my memo where I just tried to recap what happened in the last meeting, you know, the public persons contributions. And we talked about, you know, Sue and I had ideas for more themes in the land use regs, so kind of away from housing to look at like historic preservation and parking and maybe green zoning if we care to. Gary mentioned more like interactive in-person visits to places as part of this work. I provided some lengthy documents one could review if they wanted to. And, you know, certainly we can look at other towns' planning commissions if we're, you know, short of ideas or anything, but not that people need, but, you know, people have anything else to add?
Well, I just wanna, I would think since we already do a lot of collaboration with the other committees like the DRB, conservation, maybe have them, or one of them at some point come in too and maybe come into the meeting. Mr. Dotson might have time to, us as sustainability coordinator, I don't know if we've met him already, would be good. Maybe going on walks to give their insight along with the walks that you have also, you know, conservation, DRC also. But how often do you meet with the DRC?
I think it's a good idea, cause maybe early on when I joined, we had a joint meeting. And then there's two or three years passed and then we had another joint meeting last summer. But maybe, you know, just inviting commissions one-on-one, you know, talk to them individually and say, hey, is there anything you've been thinking about, you wanna present, instead of just having like everyone crammed into one meeting. That might be, that might be a nicer format to actually.
Yeah, I like that.
Hand things out. Instead of just kind of like a download of everything at once. Yeah, so anyway, people are always free to, you know, chat with Sue or Steve or myself or amongst yourselves as commissioners to, you know, to give input to the agenda and the path forward. But this was, just seemed like a good time to have a, to have a space for it to be in public. But we don't necessarily need to, you know, be as official as a select board where we have a whole, you know, three-page document spelling out all our goals for the next year and vote on that and everything. So. Okay.
Well, I guess we'll more quick, my last and final objective question, like the Wyndham Regional, do you often have any, I mean, I don't know if they have anything going on now, do they often come and present? Cause I thought maybe perhaps we could also meet with one of the commissioners at some point.
Well, ironically, the Wyndham Regional Commission is scheduled to come to the June meeting at six o'clock to do a consultation with us and they will tell us what they're up to. I mean, if you're looking for a commissioner report, I can always give that, but one of their staff members will be at our meeting. So the idea is a six o'clock, kind of start with them. It's a required thing. They're supposed to do every couple of years. And then at 6:30, we'll probably start the public hearing.
So we'll enter our five-minute or longer occasionally. We'll enter our public comment period.
I don't know if anyone was on the phone or.
There's no members of the public here?
No.
So I think we've wrapped things up, gone through all our business, unless anyone has any final.
I guess my question is just you had thrown out and a few of us had, you know, talked a little last time about other possibilities that we could be focused on. How do we make a decision about whether to pick up any of those? Can we just bring them forward in a future meeting as a proposal or?
Well, it can happen behind the scenes. You know, Sue and I and Steve sometimes chat in person or by phone, you know, whatever it is, two weeks or so before a meeting and we set the agenda. And people, you know, commissioners can just give input. You know, I guess, one could imagine like a more adversarial sort of board or commission, I'm not just saying a planning commission, just any, any group and where, you know, some members can't get their ideas on the agenda, cause the chair is like, just wants to control everything. So in those sorts of situations, there should be in the bylaws, some way that the, that the board or commission members can like come to, can propose something for a next agenda and vote on it and override the chair. And if it ever comes to that position, you know, let's say it's me, you know, my personality changes, then you can vote me out. Or you can put in the bylaws that there's a way to do that, you know, or, you know, that's kind of why occasionally I've been putting on the agenda in actual like public time where it's germane for someone to do that and then all commissioners can vote on it, even if I'm like, hell no, I don't like that view.
I've wondered if statute-wise or legally, if it's okay. I mean, you send out just a question to all of us and we'll answer you. Since I don't have a record, is that okay statute-wise? Or we need to make sure that email gets published someplace? Anyone know the rules about that?
You know, I wanna look into that a little bit more. I mean, in general, like figuring out meeting time and that kind of thing is, you know, we can have emails, like I said around to that.
Like logistics are okay, right?
Yeah, I don't know if getting into agenda planning in that way gets a little, um, a little.
Oh, no, the agenda planning is exempt, exempt from the open.
Right, that, Terry, I.
Yeah, so all seven of us.
So we could send out an email to everybody as to what your ideas for the next meeting. Yeah, I mean, that is.
So that's scheduling the meeting, distributing materials and setting the agenda, those three things. Well, in addition, non-business of the body, you know, talking about the weather, those four things can all just be talked at with a forum, by email or phone.
I think they're questionable. I said, hey, I don't like the department, what's,
Well, when you start getting into the merits, like the content of the meeting, then that's discussing the business, yeah.
That's right, I thought.
Yeah, if you're like, I'd like this on a future agenda and you email everyone and then people start saying, yeah, what's it, yeah, I was like, yeah.
I just was curious about that, so.
But as far as, you know, more casually during the meetings, you know, during announcements or public comment, like you say something, or if it comes up as a related thing to the agenda item, then say it.
Yeah, I do like when we've had it on the agenda at the end, kind of next meeting, you know, ideas, maybe.
Yeah, do that as often.
Better have it on there.
One other thing that's happened, some of the groups have been part of, is we've had an agenda topics list. So if people have agenda items they'd like to discuss in the future, you can put your name next to it. And that could be a public document that is available.
Yeah, the conservation commission has done that sort of thing two years. Yeah, the Conservation Commission has done that sort of thing two years in a row now, is sort of a priority setting for projects, and they seem to really have enjoyed that process and taken it up as a seemingly what they do now, so that might be of use, and we avoided any open meeting law snafus by having them all individually email me their project ideas, and then I put together a list that was then sort of straw-poll at the next meeting for level of interest.
I don't know, who's running the Energy Committee now, that's another good one to fill in on that, I don't know.
Well, I know who staff is, I'm not sure, you know, all the members.
Also, I, I guess to wrap up tomorrow, I guess they're having that select board meeting at the Firehouse, and I think topic also, rather than this EMS, it'll be about housing, all the organizations from different housing are gonna be there, so I don't know if anybody wants to chime in or attend, you know, just to hear what's going on going forward in the future for permanent housing for the people, because this pretty much fits into that scope too, what we're doing in a direction, so I would ask anyone if they're interested to chime in to, you know, either attend a person, or I don't know if it's gonna be hyper, but yeah, it's something that's really gonna be in-depth, because I think what's the priority is gonna be there, Wyndham Windsor, a lot of the big organizations talking about how they're gonna go future about housing for next month for the people, and about, pretty much fits into that area too, what they're gonna be talking about moving forward and building affordable housing. Also, so if anybody's interested, tune in, chime in.
That's tomorrow, is that?
Yep. So I believe it's at the Firehouse at six fifteen.
Six fifteen, yeah.
So I would definitely recommend anyone who wanted to get some info, and then you could always bring it back, and then also incorporate that into the plans going forward, so.
Okay, so I think we're all wrapped up, the meeting is adjourned. Okay. Nice to have a fifty-minute meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should stay here.
Rainstorm.
My document.
And then we'll wait for your email for tomorrow, Sue.
Yes.